Everyone, thanks for your patience. Good morning to everyone. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray. I am the councilwoman representing the 2nd District and also Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have the sponsor for the first bill. That's going to be Councilman Robert Stokes, representing the 12th District. We have Director Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office and from the Council President's Office, Preston Lewis. Also, we have our staff to our committee, Mr. Trey Hayes. Before we get started, I'm just asking everyone to just make sure that you turn off your cellphones. And today, we're going to be holding several hearings. Council Resolution 220142R informational hearing, Workday implementation status, and Council Resolution 21-0052R informational hearing, safe transition to work after COVID-19. And last, LO23, that's Legislative Oversight 23-0042, crypto spiridium at Drew Lake Reservoir. We're going to start off with Council Resolution 22-0142R at this time. I do want to thank Councilman Stokes for bringing this resolution forward to provide a transparent and comprehensive overview of implementation of the Workday Financial Management Platform. As we know, this specific phase within the platform was implemented within August 2022. The vision for the tool's launch has been to continue automating and managing our financial systems in a more efficient and effective manner. In October 2020, B sit implemented the IT software procurement review process. Yet, within the November 2022 B sit biennial performance audit, the Department of Audits found that while B sit had established their software procurement process, there were still risks that could lead to the city requiring, excuse me, acquiring redundant or unnecessary software. With that being said, the audit did recommend that B sit should use Workday to help reduce the risk of agencies bypassing B sit's IT procurement review process. This hearing is going to allow this body, along with our city workers, our contracted partners and residents, to acquire a greater understanding of the rollout and implementation status of the platform, identify potential problems, engage what corrective systems have been applied. In 2021, I did introduce a similar resolution to discuss the preliminary development and implementation process of the Workday enterprise system. The hearing brought forth our respective agencies and conducted very informative discussions around a platform that impacts all of our city operations and thousands of city employees. I believe that this hearing will do the same. I want to thank everyone who is present today, and now I'm going to turn it over to the bill sponsor, Councilman Robert Stokes, at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have some open remarks and just some requests, and then I have some questions, whatever I can ask. As Department of Finance moves forward with Phase 3 of the Workday implementation, I am requesting an updated City Council briefing. One, the implementation status, how Workday implementation challenges are being addressed and resolved, specifically those challenges related to accurate payments and recording of benefits for employees as well as accurate and timely payments to contractors and vendors. So, Madam Chair, this is just a request.
So, we're going to go ahead and get this to the agencies. Our agencies do have a bill report, excuse me, a presentation to provide, but I am going to just start with a few agencies to see if they have anything additional to add prior to us getting into the presentation. We're going to start with our Law Department. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department, we stand by our report and approve the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to our CIO's office. Do you stand by the report that you previously submitted?
Yes, we stand by our report.
Okay. We're going to go to B sit outside of the presentation. Is there anything else that you would like to add before we start with that?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. The same for Department of Finance. Did you have anything to add before we get into the presentation?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And last, DHR.
No, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, we're going to get right into your presentation whenever you're ready.
Can you pull up the first slide, please? Is there a way to kind of swap the... Good morning, Madam Chair, Councilman Stokes. My name is Todd Carter. I'm the CIO for Baltimore City. I'm here with the other two cosponsors of the Workday implementation, Director Herbert and Director Moisev. Director Herbert for HR and Director Moisev for Finance. And together, we had shepherd the project implementation over several years. We believe we have a good story to tell. We will tell it today, and we will answer the questions that you've laid out earlier and certainly any other questions that you may have. Certainly, if we don't have an answer to you, we will get back to you very shortly. If you go to, this is the first slide, these are our guiding principles and some of the benefits of Workday. The principles are what we strive for. If you take a project that is as expansive as this and as deep as Workday across all the functional areas that it touches, you really need to have something to help you focus on true principles for decision-making, for allocation of resources, and so forth. And I'm going to talk about transformation because Workday is a transformative product for Baltimore City, not only in the functionality that it provides, but also what it does and what it can do to allow our employees to learn different set of skills, to learn different ways to design, to analyze, and to manipulate data and provide better decision-making. We're still growing into the system. And when you think about on the Workday side of benefits, the decentralized real-time access of information via laptop, tablet, mobile, is something that we have gravitated toward across all of Baltimore City. For instance, employees can enter their time using their iPhone. Or, I said iPhone as a result of my discussion with Councilman Stokes today, or, but, you know, you have the capability to leverage technology and you have the ability to be empowered, given the data that you have. So, I'm not going to read every item on the slide. We have a number of slides to go through, but I want to point out specifically that we are benefiting from Workday. You're going to see that in this presentation. Our employees, our suppliers, and other stakeholders are benefiting, and we use these principles to guide us through the implementation. Next slide, please. So, if you look at this slide, you go back to 2019, and if you can remember where we were in 2019, Workday kicked off around the June-July timeframe. It is when we were in the throes of still working through the ransomware, if you recall, but we had the foresight to persevere and continue this particular project. We went live in October of 2020 with benefits, and then later in the year, we went live with capital management, compensation, time tracking, and payroll. Phase 2, well, before we went to Phase 2, we had some challenges in Phase 1. We did extensive lessons learned. We brought outside individuals to help us figure out how can we improve in our delivery? How can we improve in our communication? And how can we improve in our support? We finished that and started to go live with, we started Phase 2 and then went live with Phase 2, which included financial accounting, budgets, banking and settlement, customer accounts, supplier accounts, business assets, projects, procurements, grants management, inventory, and expensive. A long list of functionality that went live, and we are still benefiting from not only Phase 1 but Phase 2. And in parallel to doing that, we went live with learning management, talent management, and recruiting, performance management, which leads us to be right where we are now for discipline and probation. And upcoming, we have two other modules for one, adaptive planning, that will allow us to manage our budgets for capital and O&amp;M in one single place, as well as strategic sourcing that will give our ability to do business-to-business and business-to-consumer and help really streamline the procurement process even further than what we have. If I had to draw a parallel line to this, that line would show a slope of what we, as a city, are learning in terms of how to use this system, how to benefit from this system, understanding the quirks of this system. And it keeps us on a track that won't allow us to go backwards. What I mean by that is Workday has two mandatory updates every year, and new functionality is added, so we won't, we have to keep current. We have to continue to learn. We have to continue to grow with this system. So, it is a good story to tell. We believe we're on the right path to continuing to benefit from Workday. And over the next several slides, you'll see from the cosponsors that we are doing just that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Moisev, the Director of Finance. Michael?
Thank you so much, Director Carter. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Councilman Stokes. My name is Michael Moxton, Director of Finance. I'm also here with some of my finance team to help answer your questions. There's Deputy Finance Director Moiseys and Procurement Chief Manny and Accounts Payable and, oh, sorry, my apologies, Accounting and Payroll Chief Floyd. Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. So, we'll start off with what we've been able to do in the past year. We've established new communication forums for agency fiscal staff citywide that allow for the effective distribution of updates and the resolution of issues. One of the big things that Workday has let us do is transparency. End users now have access to real-time updates in one system of record, and this replaces multiple systems we used to have that didn't talk to each other. Suppliers can use Workday to view in real-time the status of their payments, the change of their account information, and change their account information through self-service, basically kind of help themselves if they need to and see problems before they arise. We've got increased self-service options. For example, suppliers can see the status of their invoices, create their own accounts, and view reporting in the Workday system related to their payments. We've been able to move to multi-book accounting, which allows for tracking of costs on a budget basis or on a governmental basis or on a gap basis. And while that's kind of very in-the-weeds technical, that's extremely important with our back-office processes. For procurement, we've been able to streamline the requisition process, removing redundancy in approval paths. Purchase orders can now be issued several times a day and are instantly viewable on approval. We've got automatic budget checks in Workday that permit agencies to take ownership of their spending in line with our strategic planning and no longer require for kind of a manual budget review process, but can be done seamlessly in the system. And finally, improvements to banking and settlement. So, bank statements are now uploaded daily for all bank accounts, allowing for easier reconciliation. And where possible, the system allows for repetitive transactions to be recorded automatically. And all of this saves time. Next slide, please. So, on procurement specifically, we've been able to realize several efficiencies already through Workday with more to come. Some examples are requisition approvals, purchase order approvals, direct submission of invoices by business partners, and informal bidding below the $50,000 level where an end-user agency is required to enter an estimated cost. Next slide. On financial reporting, we now allow payroll to post to the general ledger as soon as it's paid. We have monthly close as a business process, which, again, saves us time. I spoke earlier about multi-book accounting, which is a back-office streamlining of operations. Financial statements are now produced within Workday. Now, here, we have two templates that have been developed, one for proprietary funds, that's under GAAP accounting, and the other under governmental funds, under modified accrual accounting. And finally, business assets which are capitalized and tracked in Workday. So, each time an expenditure occurs to a trackable spend category, it now routes to a business asset accountant for a review. Next slide. On grants, grant accounting is a new module within Workday that allows for grant transactions to be recorded within the accounting system. So, grant awards are set up and monitored with a budget and award amount. As costs are expended against a grant, Workday automatically recognizes the revenue and has the capability to track expenditures against individual grant budgets. Requests for new grant numbers are tracked through Workday, assuring that Board of Estimates documentation is attached prior to setup. Agencies are receiving additional support in the form of one-on-one weekly enhancements, and group meetings are conducted on a regular basis. And enhancements for sponsor billing and subrecipient monitoring are being reviewed at a pilot program to develop standard agency training. Manuals and standard operating procedures are being created through one-on-one targeted support. There's a lot of...
Director, can you speak up a little bit more into your mic, please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. There's a lot of training that goes in to the back end of Workday, making sure it's used properly. Some of it's been done already, and more is to come. But as with other parts, it has provided us more functionality. Next slide, please. On accounts receivable, so we have now detached accounts receivable from accounts payable in line with a charter amendment that has moved accounts payable to the comptroller's office. After putting the right people in the right place on accounts receivable, we are now fully live and are in full accrual, and accounts receivable appears on each fund's financial statements. Manual invoice is created in Workday, routed through an automated approval process, which allows for better documentation. Documents can be attached to the invoice or invoice adjustment as support. Running customer reports is much easier than it had been under the old system. And per agency request, special event billing process approval is modified to fit needs. So, all of this means that behind the scenes, the technical work has gotten simpler. Next slide. So, that was accounts receivable, and I mentioned before that accounts payable is now under the comptroller. We have been working very closely with the comptroller's office to ensure a seamless transition, and the comptroller and his team have been incredible partners, both in general and with Workday specifically, in piggybacking on these improvements. So, some of these improvements in the past year are that we're no longer reliant on wire transfers, which were usually a sign that something had gone wrong and we had to scramble and do something outside the system. Now, everything is handled inside the system, which makes for much more, a much more secure audit trail. The comptroller's office conducted 14 training sessions with agencies this fiscal year, and those have been instrumental in helping everybody get comfortable with the new system, particularly as it comes to payment. And finally, there's been improved turnaround time as suppliers learn to use the Workday system. Next slide. And all of this shows in perhaps the most important metric, which is how long it takes us to pay people. When we started the implementation of Workday, we were running around 4,000 late invoices at any given time as a city. That's invoices that have gone unpaid beyond our standard 30-day window for payment. It took some time. It took a few months for everybody to learn the system, and the numbers actually crawled up a little bit last fall as we got into December. But since the training modules have gone into place and since both our own staff and suppliers around the city have become much more comfortable in the system, there has been a steady downward trend in late invoices, taking us now to less than half of where we were before at our peak. There's certainly more work to come, but we will continue that work. And with that, I will pass it off to Director Herbert to speak about the HR components of Workday.
Thank you, thank you. And Councilman Stokes, Madam Chair. With respect to human resources, Phase 3 included a number of modules: learning management, talent management, recruitment, performance management, discipline and probation, and soon-to-come succession planning. This slide shows all of the functionality that we are now seeing with the talent module, the recruitment module, and the performance management module that are currently live. We can get a snapshot of an employee's, a robust employee profile to better understand the skills, abilities, motivators, and performance of our existing employees. Next slide. Employees have really been engaging with the learning module. I'm pleased to say that since Go Live, there have been over 27,000 visits to the Workday Team Baltimore training materials. Just over 100 pieces of new content have been added since Go Live. We also are very proud of a new audio series that launched and has 38 current students enrolled. We understand that our employees learn differently. Some are auditory learners, and so this podcast-style learning module allows for them to utilize that for their professional development. Next slide. As we look at Phase 3 by the numbers, this shows the specific training that has been provided to HR practitioners with respect to those Phase 3 modules. Most notable, 104 employees were trained in Workday recruitment. These are the agency recruiters, the people who post the requisitions or request the requisitions of Central DHR to post them. We've had 64, we have 64 agency change agents. These are folks that are embedded in the agencies that are taking advantage of the training and sharing with their agencies and effectuating that change at the agency level. We created 23 job aids to assist employees in navigating the new functionality, 12 FAQs, six agency change agent meetings. We've also had a training video that we put out with respect to recruitment. That training video is in both English and Spanish and is on the city's main webpage for when applicants go to apply for city jobs. Next slide. Here, we've taken a comprehensive approach with respect to how we've provided resources to the agencies. We have a bi-weekly HR meeting with all of the HR practitioners across the city and quays eyes to address issues that arise, to inform them of new functionality that is coming online and conveying expectations with those agency HR leaders. We also have monthly HR leaders meetings. These are the meetings with the next-level HR leaders across city government that are the change agents in their respective agencies and across the enterprise. We also have agency support teams, Workday Team Baltimore, SharePoint site that has all of this information in one location where employees, leaders, agency heads can find this information relatively easily. And we also have a communication system whereby there is constant communication to allow for those questions to be escalated up to the executive sponsor team, and we work very hard. We meet as an executive sponsor team weekly to address some of the issues that bubble up throughout the agencies with respect to how to use and utilization of some of the new functionality that comes up online. And also, training. We have, as Director Moisev mentioned, there is ongoing training that is available to all of the end-users of the platform to come up to speed on what the new functionality is and how to use it. With that, we also offered office hours for the performance management module. We learned that the training numbers weren't where we wanted them to be, so we had office hours. And we had agency people leaders that came to the office hours and had questions answered and were pointed back to the training that exists, and many of them enrolled in the training and completed the training. While these agency resources and support are specific to HR, similar functionality and a similar structure is also provided to employees and end-users on the finance side as well for the financial modules. So, again, to Director Moisev's point, that training is critically important. Next slide. Here, we have an example of some of those resources that we have made available to agencies. So, for performance management, these are a list of the job aids. Some are available for employees, and we also have specific job aids for the people leaders who will be managing the performance of their subordinates throughout the year. Next slide. And for people leaders, we put together a supervisor toolkit, and this is, again, available to all of our people leaders on the Workday Team Baltimore site. Those people leaders have access to the toolkit. It refers them in some instances to the training material, but also asks some of those very basic questions that most leaders have when they're engaging in performance management. Next slide. And this speaks to the agency support structure for all questions or concerns Workday-related. And it starts with your change management agent all the way through Step 4, which is where the executive sponsor team would get involved in mitigating those questions, issues, or concerns that have not been able to be resolved at lower levels. One of the things that we didn't bore you with was a slide of the governance structure for the project and implementation, where we have the executive sponsors, which are CIO Carter, myself, and Director Moisev, but also we have other leaders in our respective agencies that form a governance team that address a lot of the issues that come up through the agencies, and we work collaboratively to understand the issue and then to mitigate the issue with the technology that exists within Workday. What I will say is that Workday is increasing their capacity amongst government clients, and as that happens, and as Director Carter mentioned, the updates to come out twice annually, as those updates continue to come up, what we've been seeing is that many of the changes are relative to the issues that the public sector clients have been raising, and it makes our jobs and a lot of the updates speak specifically to issues that we, as public sector, have been seeing as public sector operates quite differently from the private sector. And so, with that being said, I'm confident that we'll continue to see improvements in the system over time. I believe that was the last slide, and I'll turn it back over to Director Carter to discuss the B sit updates.
Okay. Director, before you start, we have three more minutes for your presentation allotted, so it's going to be a hard stop in three minutes. Thanks.
Understood. So, this slide here just talks about the support structure, and at the end of the day, we, in addition to the self-service that was described by Director Herbert and Director Moisev, we also have AMS, which is Application Management Services from Accenture, as well as support from AVAP to help us with problems and challenges and fixes to the system. Next slide. I do want to take some time of the three minutes just to mention the supplier support. There's a Workday Supplier Self-Service Portal where suppliers can access payment information, remittance, et cetera. There's a webpage, and there's also a help desk for suppliers. So, our suppliers have the capability to get the support that they need when they need it. Next slide. I'll let you all read this next slide, but it really just gets into the training by the numbers. Next slide. Director Herbert mentioned the cadence of the meetings that we have. You can see the monthly, bi-monthly, and bi-weekly meetings and the audiences and the purposes, but they are all in effort to make sure that the communication continues to flow through from within the project team and the functional leads across the organization. Then the next several slides, which in lieu of time I won't really get into, are the sort of the breakdown of the Workday Team Baltimore site that was mentioned earlier. It just gives, that slide and the next slides after that, some details about the access of the site, the number of people, the types of individuals that are going to that site, and how it's used. And with that, Madam Chair, I will yield back the remaining time from the three minutes.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I want to welcome Councilman James Torrance, member of the committee. We're going to go ahead and get into questions. I'm going to start, then we're going to go right to our sponsor. My first question is regarding, back on September 28, during the Legislative Oversight for the Budget Briefing, during BBMR's FY23 closeout presentation, Director Lawson mentioned sanitation and waste removal charges had a deficit of $5.6 million. It was related to, the deficit was driven by... It was related to, the deficit was driven by billing delays in FY23 related to the incinerator. At that time, I did ask her, were there any other agencies that were also impacted regarding billing and collections? And she stated that she would be prepared, excuse me, the Department of Finance would be prepared to speak on that at this particular hearing.
Oh, thank you. So, we are continuing to monitor if there are any other delays. There are no new delays that we're aware of. We know realistically that we will find things as we go along. One of the things that Workday has given us is much more of an ability to see in real time when something didn't get billed on time. This is something that always used to happen, was just a reality of accounting, that collections would come in late. Now, we can see it, and now we can do something about it. So, we will keep the council apprised of any other delays that we identify, but there's nothing new since the last time the question was posed.
So, outside of DPW, there were no other agencies that were impacted by billing and collections?
None, no, none that we know of at this time.
Okay, I'll follow up on that one. So, we're going to go to the Director, excuse me, the Department of Finance's report. Within the report, it was mentioned that the procurement, assessment, and transformation, the roadmap, and this report was from March of 2023, that that roadmap was in the final stage and is in the process of being presented to stakeholders citywide as a lead-up to public communication within the next two months outlining the results in detailed plan. So, again, that was the report that was submitted for this bill back in March of 2023. Can you provide us with an update on the procurement, assessment, and transformation plan?
Absolutely. So, in March 2023, the city of Baltimore was still looking for a chief of procurement, and we're very happy to say that that chief has been found. Turns out, he belonged here all along. He joined us in late May of 2023. He's sitting right here. His name is Adam Manny. Since Chief Manny joined our team, we have been working through the drafts and notes and ideas that were provided to us by our outside help on best national practices on procurement, and we've been creating a detailed procurement transformation plan. So, even though I know we've said in the past that it's coming soon, it is coming truly very, very soon. In the coming weeks, we will be able to show what the future of procurement looks like in Baltimore. Some changes will be relatively small, like how we assign staff to cover different areas of procurement so that they can become expert in those areas, and other changes will be much more fundamental in how we treat things like budget and procurement and how they interact with each other. So, all of it, the small and the big, is coming in the next few weeks, and Chief Manny and I will be presenting them to all of you.
So, what's the, what was the, can you express, like, what is the reason for any delays in it? Again, back in March of 2023 is when it's at, you're in the final stage. So, can you speak on that?
The simple fact is, we didn't have a permanent leadership to the procurement team at that time. We were trying to get to the finish line, but around that time, around March, April, May, we both made progress in finding an excellent permanent candidate to head this office, and that's something that we hadn't had in over three years. And we had a little bit of turnover at the leadership ranks. And so, when we assessed where we were in April and May, we thought that the strongest thing to do for the city was to let the new team come together and then create that roadmap with the new team in place.
Yep, and just to add a little bit more about the work that we're doing around procurement. So, the Director is absolutely right, that it was really important for us to recruit a world-class leader to the city of Baltimore to lead our procurement transformation and allow that leader the ability to implement his own reforms as a part of this procurement overhaul and reform process. I'm really excited about where we're going. The Director is right in that we have a very broad, big, long-term vision as it relates to procurement in the city, but we all know that there are some immediate changes that need to happen around procurement, and so there will be immediate smaller changes, as the Director mentioned. We've implemented what we are calling a procurement stat, where we are bringing together the largest agencies with the most outstanding procurement, with our procurement leadership, as well as with the Director of Finance and myself at the helm, so that we can immediately start to push and address some of the systemic issues that we are seeing while we implement this longer-term, more exhaustive reform to our procurement system, which, again, we now are very comfortable with where we're at. The new procurement chief has been able to opine on some of the recommendations and help pull together this final procurement roadmap, which we will definitely be sharing with the council in the coming weeks.
The company that was awarded this specific contract, Civic Initiatives LLC, have they completed their work?
They have.
On the site of? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, Phase One, Human Capital Conversation Benefits, that Go Live, to be honest, was a disaster. I met a gentleman outside, and he got a check for $17. People got overdrafts, people got too much money. Phase Two was Financial Accounting Procurement, that Go Live was not great. Given the experience of the first two Workday implementation Go Live rollouts, how are you handling anticipated issues with learning management launch? In other words, can you give any examples of how your teams have prepared to address and resolve challenges that are likely to come up?
Thank you for the question. I will say that Phase, Phase One, many of the payment issues were, we had some payroll challenges that we worked through. Benefits, however, went through with far fewer challenges. With respect to lessons learned, as Director Carter mentioned, after the implementation of Phase One, we took a deep dive into lessons learned, best practices around implementation, and deployed those in Phase Two. And we saw, while Phase Two, we had our challenges, it was, we had a roadmap as to how to address those issues and those challenges that come to resolution. By the time we got to Phase Three, which were smaller modules, we had the experience under our wings of having two implementations. So, for example, the learning module went live on August 29th, 2022, without a hitch. We haven't heard of any large-scale challenges or issues with the learning module. In fact, it's quite the contrary. One of the slides in the presentation showed that since Go Live, we've had over 27,000 visits to those training materials that are on the Workday Team Baltimore site. From the date of this, the last time that this hearing was scheduled to today, we've seen a 400% increase in the number of employees who have gone to that site and looked at training materials related to Workday. So, with respect to the Learning and Development Module, the Recruitment Module, the communication piece also has proven critical in addressing issues related to that change management. Change management, I think, was the largest risk that we faced in Phases One and Two, that we kind of learned some best practices around for implementation of Phase Three. And so, with communication, I mentioned those bi-weekly HR communications meetings, those monthly HR leaders meetings, where we have the ability to hear from the end-users where the breakpoints are, where the ouch points are. And in fact, we're working through currently a recruitment optimization process whereby we have brought in the recruitment employees, those who are responsible for recruitment in the agencies, to work alongside the Office of Recruitment and DHR to walk through how the recruitment program process works in Workday and where we can optimize and make that process even leaner and better. So, it has opened the door for collaboration and broken down silos. I think that's where we've seen improvement in the implementation, and I think we'll continue to see those improvements.
Madam Chair, can we get that in writing also? That could be a request. My second question, how are errors recorded and tracked currently?
I'm sorry, how are?
How are your errors recorded and tracked currently?
How are?
Your errors, right.
When you say errors?
How are your errors recorded and tracked, if you, currently?
If you are referring to, if there's a bug in the system, how's it tracked? We track them in a package called SolarWinds. It's one of the meetings that we have on a regular basis, where we take all of the issues that have been identified or errors, however we want to call them, we meet with the key individuals across the functional areas across the city. We prioritize those items, and those items then go to either be fixed by employees of Baltimore City or contractors of Baltimore City, or the AMS, or the Application Management Services team, or the AVAP team that we have to support. So, we have a defined process and a defined tool to track and count errors and to manage that process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two more questions, but I know your other colleagues are here, so I'll come back.
I want to welcome Councilman Mark Conway, member of the committee for Councilman Torrance and Councilman Conway. Did you guys have any questions at this time? Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate the, I'm looking at the timeline for Workday, and I just want to make clarification. It says disciplinary, wait, where are we? Disciplinary and probation. It says for us doing disciplinary actions for staff or implementing Workday, or is this just for the Human Capital portal for if we're doing a disciplinary action against staffers? I just want to make clarification for the public.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mr. Councilman. The Discipline and Probation Modules, employee discipline will now be recorded in Workday. Moving, again, this theme of moving away from paper-based systems into having one system of record, and that system of record being Workday. With probation, again, we did not have line of sight to whether or not employees were simply surviving the six-month probationary period and becoming full-time employees, or whether they were actually being, their performance was being managed and documented. This gives us line of sight to whether probationary employees are having those routine check-ins with their supervisors to ensure that they are successfully completing probation, and we aren't having later problems because a person was not properly managed during that probationary period.
Thank you. I just want to make sure the public knew in that, because on the chart, the timeline looks like if we implemented it bad, we're disciplining people in 2023. I just want to make sure that that was very public. But I want to go back to data governance. That was one of the significant issues that we had in implementation. Have we gone back and looked at explicitly in our HR portals, have people entered social security numbers, which we're missing, and when we first originally entered Workday? Have persons', social security cards been inputted as well? Because those were things that stopped us from paying people on time when we transferred over, and those were human errors, so junk in, junk out. So, have we gone back to make sure that everything that we had systems errors for has now been completely 100% accounted for now?
Yes, and again, what I will say is that as we had those issues and we identified those issues as data cleanup issues, that data cleanup has been done. Again, one of the things that we are looking at, to your point, is I-9 compliance and whether or not, how good a job we're doing at making sure that those I-9 documents are captured at time of hire and entered within three days as required. As we continue to get better, again, the technology gives us the vehicle for getting better, but it requires us as the humans that use the technology also to follow our own business processes, and that's what we're constantly getting better at as we leverage the technology.
Thank you. So, and then the next question is related to procurement. So, my office has experienced this as well, where we have a contract with someone, but we're unable to follow through with the purchasing because the contract that we have with said person was not uploaded in Workday with the actual pay schedule. So, I just want to make sure that, have we validated that information from the procurement side? Because at one time, when we switched over for procurement, the issue was that contracts that were already issued, gone through the BOE, had not been uploaded into Workday, and they were supposed to be, they were supposed to be transferred over when we did the actual initial dump into Workday. So, I just want to make sure, have we done the data compliance on the procurement side as well? And where are we with that percentage, too?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. So, yes, those data migration issues have been resolved. Contracts that are going to BOE are all now absolutely in Workday, and there's more work to be done in just making the process go faster, making it go smoother, but yeah, I can say with certainty that Workday is the system of record, and we've moved past all those initial implementation issues.
So, if we, so I'm going to make a committee request. I want to know the compliance with approved contracts that have been uploaded into Workday. So, I'm going to trust but verify this one, right? I want to make sure that we know every contract that we know that we currently have active and make sure that we've done a data compliance, make sure it is actually uploaded in a Workday. Because I've heard from agencies where they have a contract with someone, the contract's not physically uploaded in the Workday, and they cannot actually pay for services because the contract isn't there, and the person in procurement cannot validate what the actual schedule pay is, right? What the rate is, right? That's just a basic thing that we should have in Workday, but that they've come into those errors.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to pass it to Deputy Director Mosseев.
I'm sure, thank you. Deputy Director Yowana Mosseев, Finance. Thank you, Councilman Torrance, for that question. It's an important one. As Director Mossev indicated, we do believe those have been uploaded. I'll work on, I believe we have existing reports. I want to ensure that that gets you the information that's helpful, so we can provide the existing ones and then look at if there is any additional information that would be helpful.
I'll make it simple. It could just be a simple pivot chart that says, ABC Incorporated, contract in Workday, rates verified in Workday, right? To make sure that we know, like, that's it. So, it's a public accountability, right? That's the simplest way. I don't want any, just, we're at 90%. I want to know every company, up and down, is it in Workday? Has the contract been uploaded? Has the rate been uploaded, too? Because we can have a contract, but if it says $125 an hour, and if you're a procurement person who's processing the actual invoice, and it says 150, but you're not sure, there's possibilities that we could overpay, case in point, heart-to-heart. Got overpaid by $2 million, right? We have to make sure that those rates are being validated, too. So, I just want to make sure that simply pivot chart, pivot chart with company name, contract uploaded, rates verified in Workday, simple three columns.
Yes, absolutely. We do have that ability, and we can produce that for you.
Thank you.
Councilman Conway? Councilman Stokes?
This is just a follow-up from the last question when I asked about the errors recorded, tracked. So, how they cat, categorized and prioritized those errors?
Just so I'm clear, you want to know how we characterize as well as?
Prioritize, yes.
Okay, so, the characterizations are based upon the functional areas. If you look at, for instance, the third slide, you can see each of the phases, like financial accounting, budgets, banking, and settlements, those are the functional areas, and for each of those functional areas, we have leads. The way items are prioritized, we have agency AFOs or agency fiscal officers that are part of a group of individuals that come together and then rank and vote on, here are the items that are important to us to get completed, and it is through that process that the priority is determined. And from there, it's either, the item is either given to AMS, our people, or AVAP, if necessary, for completion.
Okay, is there a plan for regular system testing? Okay, is there a plan for regular system testing, quality checks, and documentation?
So, yes, so, um, once, once, once an item is identified and worked on, then it goes into testing and verification. We put that in what we call our sandbox environment that is, contains all the other changes and is a mirror of production. Then it goes to change control, where we make sure that there's visibility into this change relative to other changes that are going live. And then from there, it's migrated into our production environment. And once it's in production, it is verified that it is working as intended.
And last, I know you talked about your plan for training. Can you, can I hear about the plan for ongoing training for administrators and end-users? And I know you had it in the slide presentation because you explained the, uh, plan for ongoing training for administrators and end-users.
So, um, so the training, and I'll, I'll refer to the actual, um, slide. Um, the, the training is set up in a number of different areas. One, for project team members, which includes the agencies, um, that have functional leads as well as employees. And we offer a number of courses, one either online course or self-service course, but also, um, in-person training as well. They're offered throughout the year, um, they are done on a consistent basis. Uh, we take surveys after those training, um, courses to make sure that are, are there things that we have to learn from in, in delivering the courses? In fact, during the actual project, um, we learned a lot from each of the training courses that we did and made real-time adjustments to make sure that our training was appropriate. So, um, I think if you look at the slide that talks about training by the numbers just in the last six months, it'll just show you just the volume of individuals as well as, um, um, their participation in the courses. With respect to administrators, we don't, we don't have many administrators as others. I would, I would, the analogy, I would say the administrators are more the functional leads. These are the individuals that have more access and the ability to do deeper dives into the configuration of Workday, uh, to figure out what the problem is and/or to reconfigure it if necessary. So those would be, I would say, the modern-day administrators of, of the functionality that's in the Workday, the functional leads.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have one additional question before we get to public testimony. And this is going back to during our previous, um, previous phases of Workday implementation. Union leadership alerted, um, this body of communication shortfalls and city workers that had fallen through the cracks. Um, can you detail what your collaboration and communication strategies have looked like with union leadership and other senior-level management since the last iteration of hearings?
And absolutely. So I, I think those shortfalls tended to be on the payroll side. And, uh, the, the long and short of what happened last year came down to staffing on the city's payroll team. We had, uh, gone through a very difficult time when we emerged from COVID with the team turning over. And during that time, unfortunately, there were lapses. Uh, we had la, launched and completed Phase One of Workday, which brought payroll into Workday. And there was, after an initial rollout period, uh, definite stabilization and improvement. And, but it was after that, that the payroll team turned over. Um, we have since, uh, fully kind of restaffed the payroll department. And in that process, we have been, uh, working very closely with the unions and with the Office of, of Labor, of, of the Labor Commissioner to, uh, basically make sure that if there is a problem, that the, the unions know about it in real time as we're working to find a solution. So first of all, there are fewer and fewer problems, and we will get to a point where, uh, there are no problems at all. Uh, people's core paycheck is never at risk. We had had issues in the past with making complex adjustments, but again, those issues have become more and more rare as the team gets trained up, and we believe that we will fully eliminate it. But whatever happens, we have, uh, we have a process for alerting the unions as soon as we find out about something that there's a chance it could impact paychecks, and we keep them updated. Um, I'm going to pass it back to Deputy Director Moises to talk more about how we communicate with unions.
Thank you. And I'll just add, as relates to our union partnerships and, um, of course, the Office of the Labor Commissioner. We do have, in fact, I was with one union, um, this morning, right before this hearing. Um, we do have regular meetings, so, um, the payroll team meets regularly with, uh, two of the unions. Um, they also meet with the agencies, so these are one-on-one meetings, uh, with the agencies that have, um, large union memberships. So for example, FIRE, um, they meet regularly with the FIRE agency, and then meet with the union and the Labor Commissioner on specific issues. Um, we have some unions that send us a, uh, weekly list. Um, that list typically includes a lot of HR issues, um, so we don't work on those components. Obviously, that's the agency HR, but we, um, have visibility into those issues, can check in on them, and then, and facilitate any resolutions that we would be helpful on as relates to payroll. We found that's been really effective at, um, quickly resolving issues for, uh, the union, and of course, most importantly, for the employee members.
Okay, thank you. We are going to, um, check online for, okay. We're going to check online for, um, testimony. We did not have anyone that signed up within the chambers. Okay? And we do not have anyone who was alerting that they would like to testify online. So we are going to place this particular hearing into recess. Before we do, I'm going to, um, just give the floor to Councilman Torrance for one final question.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be brief. Um, and this is for DHR. Have we thought about centralizing HR again in the city government? Um, I think about city schools where they have their entire HR centralized, and they assign teams to a set number of schools to support it. Because what I'm finding, and from looking at Workday implementation and looking at the conversation, it seems that there's three layers to get to, to make sure that something's been implemented, instead of just having one layer, one or two layers to basically drill down the support that they need. Because it's, it's looking like 360, but it doesn't feel like 360. But it, it needs to be streamlined, like, there should be an agent. Instead of having recruitment people meet with recruitment people in agencies, why not have a recruitment division that has people in that division specialized for each agency to help them with moving it, right? So we know real-time the needs for agencies, real-time the HR issues that agencies are having.
Thank you for the question. That is something that is under consideration. BISIT underwent an optimization process, a similar process over the last year. That is something that we have been discussing and are continuing to look at the feasibility of that.
Thank you. Um, and thank you all for joining us for this particular hearing. Um, this hearing is now in recess. We will have continued discussions on this topic, um, in the future. We are going to take a brief recess for about one to two minutes to reset, then we're going to get into the next hearing. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, welcome back, everyone. We're going to start the hearing on Council Resolution 21-0052R. That is informational hearing, safe transition to work after COVID-19. What I would like to say is that our, our Baltimore City employees, um, obviously, they have been the backbone, backbone to our success and resiliency throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, our employees have been flexible and patient as requirements have changed and timelines have shifted. We know that, um, projections and timelines have changed due to the, um, continued impact, um, of this virus. And we're just bringing everyone back, um, so we can have a comprehensive understanding of any new and existing guidelines, safety measures, and adjusted timelines in order to have a smooth transition back into the workplace and just make sure that everyone is healthy and safe. At this time, we are going to go ahead and start with our agencies on this item. Um, for the Baltimore City Health Department, do you stand by your original report?
Good morning, Chairwoman. Um, this is Julia Roche from the Baltimore City Health Department. Yes, uh, we do stand by our original report, and I am here in case, uh, you and the committee have any questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, we're going to go to our Law Department.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro from the City Law Department. We have nothing to add to our original report. We stand by it.
Thank you. Um, we do have a presentation, a coordinated presentation, but we're still just going to go one by one through the agencies for DHR. Did you have anything to add outside of the presentation?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, um, DGS? Did you have anything existing to add outside of the presentation?
No.
Okay, and the Office of Emergency Management?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I have nothing else to add.
For our City Administrator's Office?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Nothing to add.
Okay, and our Baltimore City Safeties R?
Good morning, Madam Chair. They stand by that report as well.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to get into the presentation. Um, we have a, well, this is a pretty short presentation, um, but we do have a hard stop within 10 minutes, so we can ensure that we're able, the committee's able to ask questions as well as get to our final hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, um, my name is Quentin Herbert, the Director of Human Resources and Chief Human Capital Officer for the City of Baltimore. Next slide, please. During the pandemic, we wanted to leverage telework and leverage our ability to be flexible, uh, to look at how we could look at the future of work in the city. We had a pilot program that, uh, tested remote and hybrid work environments, looked at office hoteling, sharing spaces with multiple agencies, and creation of community-based office space for utilization of our employees in the community. We did assess agencies for involvement. We conducted focus groups, uh, surveyed some of those potential participants in the survey. Ultimately, the pilot, uh, included nearly 1,000 employees, uh, across the eight following agencies, DGS, BISIT, DHR, Department of Planning, Department of Transportation, MORP, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development, and MONC. There were 458 total, total reservable desks, 41 reservable meeting rooms, 96 co-working desks across seven buildings, which included two, again, two neighborhood, uh, co-working spaces. Next slide. In 2021, we, we conducted a citywide survey, uh, that went out to employees, supervisors, and agency heads. We had over 1,800 employees and 300 supervisors that completed the survey, that took a temperature check of our employees, of how they felt about the current environment and where they would like to see going forward. That was followed up in November of 2022 with a survey, uh, for those pilot participants as well. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not going to go through all of the numbers. What we, the long and short of what we saw is that employees, by and large, enjoyed the teleworks, uh, and felt that they could be productive working remotely. Uh, supervisors felt that, uh, that service, that the service delivery and the customer service did not suffer as a result of telework, uh, and that we had the ability to leverage new ways of working, like co-locating agencies and the like. With respect to some of the more technical space utilization findings, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Director Berke Atilla, uh, to walk through the next slide, which deals with some of the space utilization findings from the pilot.
Thank you. My name is Berke Atilla. I am the Director of Department of General Services. Um, there are a lot of information that you see, there's numbers in that, in that slide, so I'll try to be brief. So, um, based on the pilot utilization data, we used our software, Work, Work Order Management System and Facilities Management System, Arcbus. We used the module for the reservation and hoteling software. We put all of the participants in that system when they are on-site to be able to reserve a, a desk or a, or a private office for them. Participants reserve desks at a much lower rate than is planned because at the beginning of the, the, the COVID, people were still, were anxious about coming into the space and using the space that, that's reservable for them. Um, the overall, the, the pilot planned for an average desk of one for every 2.5 staff. That's a 2.5 to 1 ratio that you would see on the bottom right-hand side of the, the slide that you have. With some agencies, uh, such as BCIT, because of the nature of their work, they planned as a higher rate, as 4.4 to 1. These initial estimates were based on what agencies anticipated long-term usage of their space would be post-pandemic. But the utilization was much lower throughout the course of the pilot, uh, which we saw, uh, agencies seeing an average one to nine desks served as each week, peaking at between maybe two and the 19 desks each week. So, um, key takeaway from that is that although the agencies may have utilized desks at a rate lower than the initial plan, it would be, um, we needed to create a citywide space-sharing ratio that level experienced in the, in the pilot because, because of the, the reasons we now know, uh, with our overall, uh, findings and return to office orders, we're expecting that these, these ratios will be much tighter for us than what we have initially seen in, in the pilot. One of the reasons why we see maybe a lower space utilization than is anticipated is because there was no minimum or maximum days required to be onsite. The, the directive was to, to be maximize telework. That's why we see these ratios as, as a high ratio for person to desk. And, uh, with this new, new director, we're, we're expecting to see much higher utilization of our space.
Thank you, Berke. Uh, next slide? Uh, to your, to something that you mentioned, Madam Chair. Uh, back in April of 2022, the then-city administrator announced the continuation of that maximum telework posture, uh, which, which kind of impacted the numbers that Berke talked about, about utilization. However, after reviewing the results of the pilot, considering multiple factors, including service delivery, uh, customer service, recruitment and retention efforts, and et cetera, our current city administrator, uh, recently rescinded that maximum telework posture directive issued by the previous CA. And I'll turn it over to CA Leach to talk about the directive that she recently issued. And then I'll return and discuss some of those impact considerations that we are currently working through.
All right, thank you, Director. So on, on September 29th, I provided a directive to city departments and agencies to increase meaningful in-person work at city government offices. Meaningful in-person work for us is defined as purposeful work that optimizes collaboration, prioritizes customer service, and promotes the efficient and effective delivery on services. As the Director mentioned, on March of 2020, uh, Baltimore City Government moved to a maximum telework posture for eligible employees in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And April 20th of 2022, the city administrator announced the Future of Work pilot and encouraged continued telework for employees that were able to complete, uh, their work remotely without negatively impacting agency operations. Today, we have nearly 2,000 employees that work remotely three or more days per, three or more days per week. I want to acknowledge that our return to work does not mean returning to the status quo of all staff on-site 100% of the time. We continue to see this as an opportunity. Agencies are generally expected to increase meaningful in-person work while continuing to use flexible operational policies such as telework as an important tool in talent recruitment and retention and/or for advancing agency space utilization and optimization, and optimization plans. But effective January 2nd, 2024, agencies can continue to schedule employees to telework on no more than two days per week. We are allowing for additional flexibility by, um, putting in place an extent, um, an expanded, uh, telework policy as well, where. telework policy as well, where agencies can request expanded telework for teams of individuals and/or individuals that, that work for each agency. We are working with DHR to finalize our updated telework policy. So I think many folks who were using the city's telework policy at the start of the pandemic realize how antiquated and slightly outdated that policy was. And so we've worked diligently with DHR, with our agency partners, and as a part of our Future of Work pilot to update our telework policy, which will have to go to the Board of Estimates in order to be fully implemented. In addition, we are working in partnership with BSIT to ensure that we are rolling out some technological updates that will increase our efficiency during hybrid work. So for example, there have been some challenges around customer service and the, the ability of our residents to reach individuals in their offices when they are teleworking. We do have voice-over IP technology that we are looking to roll out to the enterprise in partnership with the Comptroller's Office to ensure that our employees can be reached no matter if they are working in the office or if they are working in a remote environment. We will also continue to ensure that our employees have the laptops and cellphones and all the resources that they need to be effective in the hybrid environment. In addition, we will continue to work with DHR to analyze the functional titles that are best suited for remote work, while the Department of General Services will develop that enterprise-wide building and workspace consolidation plan and strategy. Next slide. All right. Here are just a few of the milestones that we are planning for heading into January 2nd of 2024. Notification to the unions, which happened on September 27th after the directive was sent out to agency heads about our new telework posture and policy. We are looking to have a Future of Work Director Town Hall, where we are inviting the Cabinet to participate in a town hall where they can ask questions that will inform an FAQ document that we will share with leaders across the enterprise as they plan for a more, a bit more standardized telework posture. In addition, I mentioned that we are working on updating our telework policy, which we will send to the Board of Estimates in either somewhere between November and December at one of those board meetings. We are developing a, we are developing a Future of Work site where all of the information regarding telework and the city's telework posture and policies will be available for our employees to, to review and view. We are also expediting employees' training on how to use technology for office hoteling. So this is what Director Atilla spoke about. Again, this is about changing culture. It is not, you know, as a part of implementing this hybrid work, we have to ensure that we are putting the parameters in place for individuals to use office space wherever office space is available. That is going to take a, a culture shift. There's no longer going to be as many permanent offices that are specifically for individual employees. There will have to be some sharing of space, especially if employees are not in the office five days a week. And we have technology to assist with that, and we know we need to do a better job of working with employees so they know how to use that technology to reserve office desks. We are also ensuring that we are working to notify staff to allow them to make the necessary preparations. We're having some very early conversations with, with the state around some support around transit, for example. As we know that individuals have, who are, who have been hybrid may not have been using transit as much. And then, again, we're working with our agencies to ensure that they have the technology that they need in their conference rooms and in their spaces that will allow for hybrid meetings to occur, given that most of our meetings now, I would probably say 90% of our meetings are hybrid at this point. All right. With that, I will turn it back over to Director Herbert to close this out.
Thank you, Madam CAO. And again, I think the CAO touched on most of the things going, looking forward. We are looking to look now at agency preparedness and assessing what technology currently exists in the agencies that may need to be upgraded, as some offices have not been utilized in large part for, for quite some time, and there may be a need to convert some desktops to laptops or some docking, state-grade docking stations, cellphones and the like. We're, we're working through that process currently. Also, this is going to be a phased approach to make sure that we are able to bring folks back to the office in a meaningful way without having disruption to service. We don't want to create the very problem that we're solving for by not phasing this in and taking our time. So with those adjustments, we believe that we are well-positioned to meet that January date that the CA referenced, and to do that with providing as much information as possible to our employees and preparing for, for that transition back to the office.
One last thing that I will mention, given that we just transitioned from the Workday hearing, is that we, as a part of our technology upgrades, we will actually be tracking employees' telework via Workday. So right now, I, currently, there is no way for me to run a report to see who is in the office versus who is teleworking. We will add that to Workday prior to the January 2nd return to, return to in-person work so that we can run those reports, which is, it's important for, of course, health and safety reasons.
So I want to, we're done with the presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to thank you all for your presentation. I'm going to ask a few questions, and I'm going to get right to Councilmember Stokes. My first question is, on October 6th, the Mass Office of Recovery Programs provided, Office of Recovery Programs provided their latest monthly report, and that reported mentioned a $5 million commitment for BSIT to provide new computers and technical equipment for city employees. Are you able to elaborate on that commitment? And I guess what I'm asking, is this related, is this $5 million related directly to the return-to-work plan or strategy?
Yes, I, I can, I can talk to that, Madam Chair. So it is exactly related to the return, Future of Work Return to Work program. One, the, the money is split between updating conference rooms across all of Baltimore City for hybrid meetings, and then the other portion is allocated toward providing laptops and, and related equipment to employees who are, one, using their own laptop or using their own device so that we can ensure that we have and are using city equipment for city data. So it's a combination of, of laptops as well as the conference rooms that that money is used for.
Does that also include the technology like the VOIP? Is that included within the $5 million, or is that separate?
So, so the VoIP technology, that's, again, voice-over IP. It allows us to take your, your current cellphone and add, turn it into a soft phone that we can rely on integration with Teams, integration with your scheduling or Outlook, and it allows us to roll down calls to you such that if you call your, your desk phone, it can roll down to your, your cellphone. You can turn a message that was into, put into your desk phone, have that email to you so that you won't be able to miss that email as a, as a file that you can listen to. So the VoIP technology that we're using is here today. It's just expanding it and making sure that we are more deliberate in rolling it out. It also makes sure, it allows us to make sure that here's a standard, here's a minimum standard for those, you know, service, those customer-facing organizations and individuals to say, you know, you need to have a voicemail on your, on your cellphone. You need to have a voicemail on your desk phone. You need to have these tools to make sure you can roll down and receive messages from customers and so on. So us working with the Comptroller's Office is implementing what we have, but doing it in a standard way, focused primarily on the customer-facing units throughout Baltimore City.
Thank you for the clarification, because I'm sitting here thinking about my agency, and I know my office and my colleagues, like, we have soft phones. We've still made, even when we just had to forward the numbers to our worker's cellphones, people were still able to contact our offices from 9 to 5. And I, I know it's for many of my colleagues, but personally, we've always, we've always been up. I have a, a concern about something that you said. How, is there a rough estimate of how many city workers we have that do not have city-issued equipment to do their work specifically, laptops, tablets, at this time?
So, good, good question. When, when the pandemic first started, we did not have enough computers to go around. And there was a shortage, not only for us but across the country, because everyone, the demand for equipment was so high that the supply chains just, just froze up, and supply chains were just starting to reopen. So in a lot of cases, we don't know exactly how many, employees were using their own equipment to log into systems. They can do that securely. We have, we can do that securely, but that's the reason why some employees have used their, their equipment, their home equipment to, to work in Baltimore City. So yes, that's what we are trying to identify, and that's what we're looking to fix, is make sure those employees are using employ, excuse me, Baltimore City-owned equipment for, for their jobs.
For our city administrator, would you be able to elaborate? I know it's going to the, the Board of Estimates, can, but can you speak to some of the changes that you're able to share that would be within the new telework agreement for employees?
Sure. So I'll ask the HR Director to elaborate. But again, we, throughout this process, we've been learning from our own implementation of telework as well as the implementation of telework across the country. And so we've pulled together some best practices, the updated policies that we've seen other cities implement in order to make updates to our policy. But Director Herbert will go into the specifics of what you'll see in that policy.
Yes. First, I would like to say that the, the major change is that when the CA mentioned antiquated, antiquated, our policy was, we were requiring employees, for example, to take a photograph of their home workspace and have that on file from a risk management perspective. That was, that is something that was an outlier, right? And so the new policy obviously will remove that requirement. Another thing that I want to just say generally about policies, policies are effective when they are more broad and allow more flexibility. And so what we are looking at is how we can use, utilize the best practices that we have learned through the pandemic to give, as the CA mentioned, more of that flexibility to our agencies to, one, determine which functional titles are appropriate for telework or remote work, and to provide more guidance to agencies and agency heads when making that determination. That's, again, something that wasn't present in our current policy, that level of guidance. That's something that we're going to look to include in the revised policy that has more guidance to those people leaders around what they should look for with respect to what positions are appropriate for telework and in drafting those telework agreements. With that policy revision, I also want to highlight training that we have available because that is another critical component, because one of the things that we realized through this experience is that we have a lot of people leaders who did not know how to manage folks in a remote environment. And so there's, there's a lot of the mentality, if I can't see you, touch you, put my hand on you, I, I can't say that you're doing work. And there are tools that we can give to people leaders who are managing folks in a hybrid environment where we can tell whether a person is working or not working in a, in a remote environment, and you can supervise their work, and we have tools to help you to do that. So it's, it's a both and. There are going to be some adjustments to the policy to modernize it, but it's also going to be us making sure that our people leaders who manage folks who work in a hybrid environment have the necessary training and resources to aid them in that.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
I think it's a question from Director Herbert. How many, do you have a list of how many employees of each agency that you have a shortage of employees? Would you have that list? The reason why I'm saying, and I'm glad to see you move that, made the statement, COVID is over with. I have constituents who email, who leave phone calls three weeks, three months, and they don't get no answer. And I think it's good that people can telework, but when you don't have people answering the phone for the constituents in the city, how do we now tell people they can work two or three days when you can't get nobody to answer an email or phone call? So my reason why I'm asking that is there a shortage in each one of these city agencies and why that's happening? Because I'm still getting emails, and I'm sure my colleagues also. I mean, nobody's answering the phone. COVID been over with. People are working from home right now, and I know constituents cannot get nobody to answer the phone or answer any of their emails. So how are we addressing that in terms of having a two- or three-day workday when right now we still don't have nobody to answer the phones right now? And I don't understand. So my question is, can you give us a list of each agency? I don't know if that's for you to give us, of each agency and how many vacancies y'all have? Because it don't make sense to me. We go to two to three days, but we got a whole bunch of vacancies in these city agencies.
We, we don't have that information. I don't have that in front of me right now. That is something that I can provide, a vacancy report. But let, let's, let me be clear. I, I think that, and I think everyone in this room would agree, it is unacceptable for a constituent to have a need and not be able to reach someone in any agency to address that concern. And that gets back to something that we've been talking about previously and something that I mentioned previously, the training component and the technology component. And let me say, I've, I've had the VOIP since the onset of COVID, where if you dial my office number, it rolls to my cellphone, and many of you have called me not only during the business day but after hours and have gotten me. I answer the phone. And it's that training and the expectation setting, folks in my office understand that there is an expectation that if you get a voicemail, that that voicemail is answered within 24 hours. We, it's, it's that, that training component, there are some people leaders who may not have that skill set in it to, to manage to that level in a remote environment or in a hybrid environment. We are slowly getting there. That training is available, and we are, we are marketing it, and we are trying to get as many people leaders as we can to go through that training. But something that the CA mentioned earlier, and it's true, this is a culture shift, and cultures don't shift overnight. And we're working very hard to shift the culture to provide the best level of services that we can to our citizens while also considering the needs of our employees.
So, Councilmember, can I, can I respond? I, I actually want to read an excerpt from the directive that I sent out to city employees regarding standardizing our telework operations. So there's a paragraph in here that speaks specifically to your issues. "The efficient and effective delivery of city services will remain our North Star. This requires that every city employee is responsive, minimally acknowledging receipt of emails and phone calls within 24 hours or by the next business day, and demonstrates the highest level of professionalism when communicating with colleagues in the public. Standardizing remote work across our city, city enterprise will move us steadfastly towards our North Star." And so the reason why I ensured that we put that language inside this directive is, right now, we have, different agencies are implementing telework in different ways. And so what we are looking to do is to put some protocols in place so that we are putting, standardizing the process in some way, right? Now, of course, we want to provide for flexibility, but customer service and the delivery of city services is going to be our top priority, and that is in part why I implemented this directive, and that is also why I've been working with BSIT and DHR and DGs on space, our human capital management, but also on that technology. So the, the way that the Director described that voice-over IP technology, there are a couple hundred people maybe across the city enterprise that use it, maybe a little over 1,000 or hundred people maybe, across the city enterprise that use it, maybe a little over 1,000 or so that use that technology. We have the ability to expand that, so that more people can use that technology. So that when that customer calls, you not only get the call on your cellphone, on your desk phone, you also get it in your email as well, that you missed the call, or that you have a voice message. So that we are making it to where there are no excuses as to why an employee is not able to respond to a customer. And we haven't implemented that across the enterprise. And so that is going to be a part of the work that we are doing between now and January 2nd. But we know, as the Director mentioned, that that will require training. Everyone is not able to use the technology in the same way, and we know that we have to train folks and get them comfortable with using this technology. But it is of the utmost importance to me that we are answering phone calls, that we are returning emails, and that we are responsive to our residents. And so that is why we are now implementing this, because we do have over 2,000 employees that work remotely three or more days a week. And so now, we're putting some standards in place.
I applaud you, Madam CAO, but my question goes back to, actually, this didn't happen, this wasn't happening, this was happening before COVID. This ain't nothing new. We can't blame everything on COVID. My question is, how can we train, implement something when we don't know what shortage of employees we have in each agency? My other question is, if you're going to provide the tools for them? And my chairwoman asked Mr. Brown a question. You say you're still trying to get those tools for employees, so if they're working from home? So my question is, that mean you have not provided most of the employees with a cellphone, a laptop? Because you say you're still trying to implement that. Is that something that y'all have not actually done? Because it sounds like you said it, but you have not making sure that all the city employees, if they're going to be teleworking, have the tools to work from home? Because if that's, which the statement you made, if everybody don't have the tools, we're going to be back here, we're going to be talking about the same thing, about nobody answers the phone, nobody answers the email. So my question to you from my chairwoman was, you said that you trying to implement more, because you ain't had enough computers and phones. So where is that at right now, in terms of, now we're going to two days and three days for telework, and it sound like every employee don't have the tools to work from home?
So I would, I'm sorry. I would characterize your statement a little differently, and then answer it. Employees are working every day, and they're working with either Baltimore City-provided tools or their own, whether that's a laptop, a desktop, or a cellphone. Some employees are using their own equipment. I can't tell you exactly what that number looks like, but that's what part of these dollars are for, for one, for us to find out, and then replace, and to give those employees the laptops that they need. Some employees took their desktops home during COVID, and they were using their desktops. So we have a hodgepodge of equipment that is being used, and this process that we're going through, and I'll talk about that in a minute, is designed to understand what that baseline looks like, is designed to rectify that baseline by providing the right tools, and then, in addition to those tools, making sure that they have the right telephone, cellphone, cell phone equipment as well. We just got the funds appropriated to us. We hired a program manager, and we are actively going through the process of identifying those individuals that, because we can tell when you use our systems where you are. And we're going through the process of analyzing that data, defining where we need to deploy the laptops. We just started working with the Comptroller's Office over the last two weeks, since the directive has went out, and have met with them weekly, have weekly meetings for the planning and execution of the rollout of the VoIP technology and cell phone technology to everyone. So this work has started, and we are in the midst of the planning and deciding what the baseline is to rectify.
And one more comment, Madam CAO, I'm glad you're doing that, but who's going to monitor to make sure what you implement in terms of employees returning emails, phone calls? How is that going to be managed?
Yep. So it will continue to be managed by agency leadership and by the supervisors or people managers. That is a part of their duty in managing their teams and managing their staff, is that they also monitor their responsiveness and customer service as well. I do think that there is an opportunity for us, which we will lean into, around some training around customer service, to remind, to remind the enterprise of what our standards are, which is why, again, I made it a part of this directive, and we are making it a priority in the work that we do between now and the, our return to more frequent in-person work.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if I could add to that, Madam CA, that directive is one of the things that our Learning and Development Office has created specific training for forward-facing employees around customer service. And so that will be rolling out soon as well. For those employees who are in classifications that are forward-facing, that are required to interact with the public, they will have specialized training around customer service for those employees.
I have a committee request. I know that Councilman Stokes has requested vacancy information for the roughly 2,000 workers who are privileged to work from home. Can you give us a breakdown of those workers and what agencies they're within? If we can get just a count per agency, or rough estimate per agency, of where they're generally located? I feel like I have an idea, but I just want to see the numbers. As for my question, this is something that I actually asked at the last, well, asked a very similar question at the last hearing, in this regard, mental health and return anxiety. As we've heard multiple times today, I've heard this term, it's going to be a culture change. But one thing that cities across the country are doing, they're allocating funding towards reducing the stigmatization of mental health for their employees. For example, providing in-person and virtual trainings to educate employees on the importance of mental health and wellness, and delivering comprehensive resources to proactively address the mental and emotional needs of employees. And we know that solid and consistent communication with employees around return timelines are proven to ease worker anxiety. Since that last hearing in January of 2022, what is the city doing, or what has taken place currently, just to communicate with our city workers around the topics of mental health? And also, just how do you plan on communicating with workers around that topic in the future? The last time we did speak about, or you spoke about, the EAP program. But what additional steps, if any, have we taken around this topic, especially knowing that some folks are going to have a hard time coming back to work?
I would just also, just recapitulate, the services that EAP provides. Additionally, we have, within our benefits office, a wellness team, and some of the wellness topics relate to mental health. Also, we also recommend employees, or refer employees, to our health providers. Our providers also send out information around mental health awareness, and also services that are offered through our providers. CareFirst sends out communications, as does Aetna. And so that information goes directly to the employees. But again, EAP services to employees, both at the agency level and at the individual level, has been provided to employees to address concerns around anxiety, and also providing overall information around mental health and those benefits that are available to our employees and staff.
And I'll just add to that. In addition, DHR did implement a wellness seminar that I believe I attended last year, where we brought agency partners and providers together, and made that information and those resources available to employees. And I believe, Director, that's something that we're looking to do again as well. Another thing that has become a frequent area of concern is, we've had a number of agencies that have dealt with trauma related to the loss of life of employees. Most recently, I think at the Convention Center, they lost two employees. And we actually deployed resources through BCRI, and MONC, and some of their partners deployed some additional resources over a weekend, as the second death, I think, resulted on a Friday, when EAP resources were not readily available. So we tap into all types of partnerships and providers as needed when supporting our employees that may be experiencing trauma or having some challenges around mental health. But again, just wanted to really reiterate and highlight the work that the wellness team at DHR does around this topic.
Thank you. What I hope that we can do is, we know that this pandemic has exacerbated mental health issues, and that includes for a lot of our employees. I want to stress that we need to continue to think outside of the box, to be very creative about how we're getting this information out. I know that there are trainings within the learning portal about anxiety, about how to deal with tough situations around mental health. Maybe you guys can package some of this stuff and say, hey, this is available, if you're dealing with this, if you're dealing with, what is the word, where you're overwhelmed? You guys know what it is. Where you're overwhelmed, that you just feel like you're just doing too much. I'm running a blank right now. But I want to make sure that we're highlighting this, and employees know that what's available. Thank you.
Did you have any additional questions, Councilmember?
Okay. I want to thank everyone for joining us for this hearing. I look forward to seeing where we are in November, when more information is released, and before the rollout of January. I want to make sure that we are communicating consistently with our employees who are going to be impacted. At this time, we are going to recess this hearing, and two to three minutes, we will be, we're going to reset for our next hearing. Thank you. Everyone, we are going to get started with Legislative Oversight 23-0043, cryptosporidium at Drew Lake Reservoir. And that is for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, Baltimore City Health Department, the Office of the City Administrator, and any other relevant agencies to discuss the recent detection of cryptosporidium. This body has continuously communicated to agencies and to the administration that this city will not run effectively, and cannot flourish without consistent and reliable city services. And that includes our water system. I called for this legislative oversight hearing on the recent cryptosporidium detection that impacted half the city, many of my colleagues, myself included, and parts of surrounding areas, because our residents, our neighbors deserve to know on the record what happened, what our agencies are currently doing, and what must be implemented in order to protect our residents and our neighbors. We are going to get right into this. The agencies have a coordinated presentation, and we're going to work with them to get that on the screen, so we can start now. I'm thanking everyone for their patience while we are working through these technical issues. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman McCray, and members of the committee. My apologies, I thought it was up. Okay, I think we got it back up now. Richard Luna, interim director, the Department of Public Works. We have a number of staff members from the Department of Public Works as well, too, here to help answer any questions the council has. We also have representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department and Office of Emergency Management as well, to help answer any questions. Staff as they're presenting items on this slide will introduce themselves, but I can jump right into it. This is going to be the overall agenda that we'll discuss with the council today, starting off with what is cryptosporidium, that'll be presented by our Baltimore City Health Department. I'll talk a little bit next, after their presentation, on the Administrative Order on Consent, which is the item that's related specifically to this event, the reason why we're doing testing, and the two reservoir tanking projects over at Ashford and Injurate Lake. And then finally, I'll conclude with just an overall timeline of just some of the major events that took pace over the past two weeks. And so with that, I'll turn it over next to our City Health Department.
Good morning, and thank you, Councilwoman McCray, Committee Chair McCray, and other members of the committee. Moving on to the first slide. Or the next slide. Well, that's being done, I'd like to also introduce, we have Dr. Tamara Green, our Chief Medical Officer from the Health Department, attending virtually, as well as Mary Grace White, our Director of Acute Communicable Disease. We also have our Legislative Representative, Julie Roche, our Director of Preparedness, Kimberly Eschelman, and our Deputy Commissioner for Aging and Care Services, Young Tan, present in the room. Cryptosporidium is a parasite that causes the diarrheal disease cryptosporiosis. Both the parasite and the disease are commonly known as crypto. Between 2001 and 2010, crypto was the leading cause of waterborne disease outbreaks that were linked to recreational waters, swimming pools, lakes, and rivers in the United States. It is found in every region of the US and throughout the world. It can be found, of course, in water, as I've mentioned, but also in food, soil, or on dirty hands and contaminated surfaces. Humans and animals who are infected with crypto shed the parasite in their stool. As such, crypto transmission can occur in various ways, including through consumption of contaminated water or by direct contact with the stool of infected animals or humans. Moving on to the second slide, please. Symptoms of cryptosporiosis generally begin two to 10 days after becoming infected with the parasite. The most common symptom is watery diarrhea. Other symptoms include stomach cramps or pain, nausea, vomiting, and fever. Some people have no symptoms at all. In people with healthy immune systems, the symptoms usually last one to two weeks. People with weakened immune systems may develop more serious, chronic, and sometimes fatal illness. In people with weakened immune systems, crypto can affect the digestive tract or the respiratory tract. Examples of people with weakened immune systems include people with HIV/AIDS, those with inherited diseases that affect the immune system, and cancer and transplant patients who are taking certain immunosuppressive drugs. The risk of developing severe or illness may differ depending on each person's degree of immune suppression. The Health Department team, the Health Department team collaborated with the leadership of DPW, but I must note that there have been no cases of reported cryptosporiosis in the two months preceding the testing of this water. There has also been no particular uptick in general reports of GI illnesses, which we monitor for at the Health Department. Cryptosporidium, cryptosporiosis is a reportable disease, and we have been monitoring the reports daily, and there have been no reports from healthcare providers or laboratories. If an individual does feel sick, they should drink plenty of fluids and stay hydrated, avoid beverages that contain caffeine, and contact their healthcare provider if they suspect they have cryptosporiosis, to discuss testing. I'd like to now turn it back over to the Department of Public Works, Director Luna.
Thank you for that, and thank you for providing that broad- Thank you for that, and thank you for providing that broad overview on cryptosporidium. The other item I wanted to talk about before we get into the major timeline events is the work that's being done over at Ashford and Injurid Lake Reservoirs. So the city is currently under an administrative order of consent with the EPA to complete those two projects by the end of this calendar year. So for Ashford and Reservoir, that's November 30, and for Druid Lake Reservoir, that's December 30. Now, it's important for the council and the public to understand that both of these reservoirs receive treated water that has been processed through the city's water filtration and treatment process. So as water comes in through our raw water reservoirs, we treat that water before it gets out into the distribution system and gets into people's homes. These two locations, Ashford and Injurid Lake, are currently on schedule to have their cover tanks completed by those two dates that you see there on the screen. As part of the administrative order consent, the city was required to do additional monthly testing for both cryptosporidium and gerardia. That monthly testing started back on July 24, and those are the three dates that you see there on the screen where the monthly testing was completed. The reason I highlighted the September 19 date is because that's the test that essentially returned the positive case for cryptosporidium over at Druid Lake Reservoir. So I wanted to provide that context before we advance the slides. We can now go over to the timeline, starting on Tuesday, September 19. So like I mentioned, on Tuesday, September 19, DPW laboratory staff collected a monthly sample at both Ashford and Injurid Lake. Those samples were then shipped out to an independent laboratory that's located out of state, and on Tuesday, September 26, DPW was notified of the positive test for Druid Lake, and that's a small detection of cryptosporidium in the water that was there at Druid Lake on September 19. I just want to make that clarification. As I stated, the water sample was collected on September 19, and so as we get the results back of that test a week later, we were notified that on September 19, the water did have that small trace amount in there. As part of our administrative order of consent, we then are required to notify both EPA and MDE of that positive detection, which we did later that evening. The next slide. Wednesday, September 27, essentially a series of meetings took place and coordination amongst the city agencies that you see here before you. So we began meeting with both MDE, MDH, and EPA that morning on Wednesday, September 27. And the conversation there is essentially, now that we've had a positive result, what is going to be the next phase in terms of public notification and next steps? So we held a series of meetings with those agencies all throughout the day on Wednesday, September 27. On the same day, staff goes out and collects a re-sample just for Druid Lake Reservoir, since Druid Lake was the one that received that positive result. Throughout the day, as we're coordinating with all of those agencies, DPW finally receives written notification from the Maryland Department of Environment. That notification came in around 6:55 p.m. by email, and that provides us the guidance and language on what the public notification would come out as. And in the same direction, we received, in the same letter receiver direction to issue that public notification by 9 a.m. the following day, that's on Thursday, September 28. So it's important to note that anytime there's an advisory that has to be issued by the city in terms of the water system, we do have to coordinate with our state regulatory agency before we issue that notification. And then there's a series of both, a round of editing in terms of how we propose the language to be, and then the state to approve that language. And so we're required to do this both with MDE and MDH on this case, because it does involve multiple agencies. So later that evening, after we've received the official guidance from MDE and the state on what to include in the notification, we submit to them the proposed announcement later that evening. Moving next to Thursday, September 28, we had several rounds of edits with the state agencies early that morning before we finalized the announcement. At the same time, we're also finalizing the overall impact area on the map. The area that you see on the map is a very wide area. Essentially, what our analyzers' office looked at is, out of the water that was in Druid Lake around September 19, where could that water have gone to throughout the distribution system? And so that's why you do see a much wider area in those maps. By 8:51 a.m., DPW issues its first public announcement via press release. We then have a meeting just immediately following that announcement, I believe, at 9 a.m. to continue meeting with MDE and MDH to discuss next steps. Later that morning as well, too, the city administrator, DPW, and the Health Department staff called a virtual press briefing with the local media to discuss the issue. And then we also began to coordinate in terms of targeted water distribution to senior centers, senior buildings, nursing homes, and assisted living facilities with 20 or more residents, and that's coordination between DPW, the Health Department, and Office of Emergency Management. We also held a briefing call with the city hospitals later that evening to provide them the necessary information and all the information we had up to that point. And so that call was held later that evening. Moving next to Friday, September 29, the re-sample that we had collected at Druid Lake is received by the independent laboratory, and then at that same day, DPW, the Health Department, OEM finalized the facilities for water distribution, and then those deliveries begin that same day on Friday. We continuously meet with MDE and MDH on Friday, and as well as, too, as staff had been coordinating with those two respective agencies on a list of frequently asked questions. And so those FAQs go through a series of edits back and forth between both the city agencies and the state agencies. We finished those final edits on Saturday, September 30, and at 6:07 p.m., we're able to update and publish the updated announcement, which was essentially reissuing the first announcement that was published on Thursday, but then we added those FAQs for additional information to the public. Moving next to Monday, October 2, continuously meeting with MDE and MDH on next steps, including public announcements after the re-sample tester return. At that point on Monday, we were still waiting the results to come back from the re-sample that we took at Druid Lake. That does come in on Tuesday. So on Tuesday, October 3, in the morning, we do receive the results of the negative test. That's the first negative test after the original positive that was over at Druid Lake. On that same day, we also begin weekly sampling. So one of the items that we had discussed as we were doing this coordination is, the EPA administrative order requires us to do monthly testing for cryptosporidium and gerardia at both Ashford and Injurid Lake. The city implemented doing weekly sampling starting that first week of October. So that Tuesday, October 3 date, that's the first day that we start doing the regular routine weekly sampling at both of those locations, Ashford and Injurid Lake Reservoirs. We continuously meet throughout with MDE and MDH regarding next steps throughout that day, especially in terms of now that we've gotten a first negative sample from Druid Lake. And then we work on that final language with those two state agencies, and at 7:33 p.m. we update, we publish an updated announcement on the negative test result. However, through an abundance of caution, both MDE and MDH are still implementing the health guidance, especially to those people with immunocompromised conditions or severely weakened immune systems. So that guidance remains unchanged, and it remains unchanged even to this date. Moving now to Thursday, October 5, we held another briefing calls with the city hospitals to give them the latest information we have. During that briefing call with the city hospitals, we then received the results of the second negative testing results over at Druid Lake. This is that weekly sampling that we had started that same week. And so this would be the second negative test that we received over at Druid Lake Reservoir. At the same time, MDE and MDH are notified of the second negative test results at Druid Lake. And then on Friday, October 6, we get the webpage created, so now if you were to click on that link, you can find the webpage that posts all of the sampling results to date, going all the way back to July when we first started the sampling tests, both at Ashford and Injurid Lake. So what we'll do next is continuously keep that information updated. Like I said, we're now on a weekly sampling schedule for both reservoirs, and we'll be posting those testing results as we receive them, and then we'll be continuously meeting with our state regulatory agencies, both MDE and MDH, in terms of the long-term plan for posting that information. Like I said, right now, we're committed to doing the weekly testing, getting those results back as soon as possible, and then publishing and sharing that information with the public. Wanted to provide that overall major event timeline for you over the past two weeks. And like I said, we're available, too, for the council, should they have any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. We have some questions. We have some questions. So I'm going to go ahead and start with this one. And I wanted to just be on the record and just say, this needed to be scheduled. We will have upcoming hearings, just to make sure that we are giving our residents an opportunity to testify in full, and that we're actually able to promote the hearing. This is the first hearing that we're having on this, so this will not be the last time. How confident, my question is, how confident? There have been multiple delays in standing up, covering the reservoirs, or moving those to underground storage tanks. There have been multiple delays. How confident is DPW that we're going to meet the November 30 deadline for Ashford and the December 30 deadline for Druid Lake Reservoir?
Yes, thank you for that question. I had a conversation with a contractor just on Monday, and both the contractor and city staff are confident in completing the projects by those dates.
I apologize, Director. Could you repeat that? I heard the part, you had a conversation with a contractor on Monday. What was that afterwards, please?
Yes, so we have a contractor who's helping us complete that work, both at Ashford and Injurid Lake, and so we have regular meetings with them and their team to talk about the projects. I checked in with them on Monday as well, too. Both city staff and the contractor are confident that they can meet those two dates.
My next question, and then I'm going to get to Councilman Stokes. We were warned, DPW was warned about a possible water parasite risk back in May. What I would like to know is, once that warning was received, and knowing that there were extensions that were going to be, that were acts regarding moving this to the underground water tanks, moving that date again, what did the collaboration look like with the Baltimore City Health Department, or what plans did your agency take in preparation in case this did happen?
Thank you for the questions. I'll first note that the information regarding the uncovered reservoirs, right, both at Ashford and Injurid Lake, that information has continuously been included in our annual water quality reports. So the annual water quality reports has standard language, very similar to the language that we've published recently in the past two weeks regarding both open reservoirs, and then especially guidance for those that may be immunocompromised, and what protections that they should take. So our water quality reports have that information in there. That information is on our website. We provide links to the water quality reports, as well as on every single water bill that's issued by our team. In terms of coordination, this is a relatively new process for us in terms of testing, and as we've discovered, too, with the state, this is a new process for them as well, too. So immediately after this happened, we had internal coordination with our city agencies and our state regulatory agencies, and talking about, okay, now that we've received an actual positive confirmation from one of these two reservoirs, what are those next steps looking like? So over the past two weeks, we've been working hand in hand with both our Baltimore City Health Department, our Office of Emergency Management, the mayor's office, the administrator, in coming together and working together to making sure that we're getting the most accurate information together as quickly as possible, and getting that information out as soon as possible. Like I mentioned in the presentation, before we have to issue any kind of public notices and requirements, we do have to get that signed off by our regulatory agencies, and because we are working with MDE and MDH on this item, that also does add in a little bit more time in terms of getting that public information finalized and then distributed out to the public.
So I guess at this time, I want to hear from our Health Department, and we can circle back to DPW. My main concern is, how are we preparing ahead of time before something happens? Or does the Health Department have, I know that we have, I believe it's the Director of Preparedness or Preparation within the Health Department, can they speak to when these items come up with DPW, knowing that we still have these open water reservoirs that are uncovered? What has preparation looked like before this took place? Have there been ongoing conversations with the agency in preparation that this may take place?
I would like to defer the question to our Office of Preparedness, Kimberly Eschleman.
Good morning. My name's Kim Eschleman. I'm the Director of the Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response at Baltimore City Health Department. We, as part of our program, we do lots of training of our team within the Health Department, but also with our partners and sister agencies and in the region as well, training and exercising some of our plans for public health emergency responses. So two of those actions that have happened recently, more recently, one, DPW had a tabletop exercise that we participated in April. It's a discussion-based exercise where we talk through a scenario and the actions that would follow, and that's to help us practice what that response would look like. We also have engaged DPW on some other instances. We meet regularly with our city hospital emergency managers to coordinate our actions with their plans and to help them understand how these responses would roll out. So for one of those meetings in May, we invited DPW to come and present, to just have that information exchanged, so they could understand the healthcare impact of these kinds of events, and for our hospitals to also understand the way the water system works and is set up, and to have deeper insight into that. So those are two examples, but we do a number of trainings throughout the year that we have requirements for our agency response. We call it our emergency response tiers, and so we are actively doing that routinely throughout the year, and participate in many planning and preparedness meetings with both DPW, but also other agencies as well.
Thank you. Because my concern was, are we preparing ahead of time before it comes? So I'm going to say thank you for your response. One of my larger issues from my constituents is how we are disseminating information when things happen. I've had constituents who attempted to, how can I protect myself in the future? They didn't get the information right away. They wanted the information. They went to our OEM management alert system and could not sign up. I could not figure out how to get them signed up for DPW's alert system. That was another inactive page when I went on the website to say, hey, you can go here. So is this something that, let me say this, did OEM send out any alerts regarding this issue? I know that DPW within their system sent out DPW alerts, but I want to know, how can residents proactively get this information without relying on a press release, without, say, you're not watching the news channel anymore, maybe you're unplugged? Also, maybe you don't have social media. So how can residents sign up to get alerts, proactive alerts, when these things happen to their phones, to their email from our agencies? And that would be for DPW in the mayor's office, because I don't think OEM is here today, unless the representative is here. If you are, I apologize. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Joey Henderson, Acting Director of OEM. For this particular event, we did not send out an emergency notification. We do have the ability to send out a mass notification. That mass notification is generally sent out for if we have a threat to life, if we have a significant threat to property damage, or if we have a potential disaster incident that's cascading, that we want to send out information right away for. In terms of making our platform available for folks to sign up, we have just switched over to a new system. over to a new system, our Everbridge system, and we are building that capability for our citizens to be able to actually sign up to receive mass notifications via text, via telephone, via, via landline. So we are making that, that transition as we speak and we'll be able to have our, our citizens to sign up for notifications, whether it's weather notifications or whether it's information that we're sending out from city agencies.
Do we have a timeline for when our residents will be able to get to sign up for OEM's system? When, when is the rollout going to be complete?
We are actually currently working with our, our public information officers of all of our agencies on that rollout. We should have that available within the next month.
For DPW, just so we make sure this is on the record, how can residents sign up for your alerts? You have an alert system. How can residents sign up for your specific alert system to get these notifications?
Yeah, we do have that option available on the website. We'll double check. If there's an issue with anybody registering right now, we'll go and look at the system and double check. But as we, as we issue press releases, I know it's set up on my phone that I automatically receive a text message anytime a, a press release is issued by the agency. The other avenue that we always take as well is we have a very robust network of community organizations and neighborhood associations that are part of our ongoing network that we're continuously build out. And so as that information was published, both in press release form, we did disseminate that and push that out to those respective organizations as well.
Can you send the council members, can you send the council members the exact link that we should be forwarding to our constituents? Again, when I look for a link on the website, whichever one popped up, and I know that we are going to be upgrading the city website, but in this case, again, communication was the largest thing that my office received from constituents. They want to get the information. Councilman Stokes. And guys, we have to, again, we're going to continue this, but we got to get out of here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Luna, I was just reading the article Madam Chair talked about, Channel 11 talked about back in May, the EPA had warned the city officials about the parasite in May. And you mentioned that there's a process in terms of, I guess you got to go to the EPA first before you can release it to the public. Can you take us through those steps?
Yeah, so in terms of the current language and the EPA administrative order, right? So that's the language that dictate us, dictated for us to conduct that monthly testing. We're required to send a notification to both EPA and MDE whenever we receive a positive, whether it was for Cryptosporidium in this case, or Gerardia, which is the other material that we're.
And how long do that take?
I'm sorry?
How long do that take? After you contact EPA? How do that long it take? Because if y'all were warned in May and you said September the 19th, I believe, that's when y'all discovered parasites, that's like three months.
Right, so we did monthly testing on July 24th. There was no positive results that came back. We did testing on August 21st. There was no positive results that came back. We did testing on September 19th. There was no results in Ashburton, but that's where we received that small detection at Drewed Lake. That same day that we received the notification back from the independent laboratory is when we notified EPA and MDE on the, on the positive result, because that's required as part of the administrative order. As I mentioned in the timeline, we spent the entire next day coordinating with EPA, MDE, and MDH on what that public notification would be, what that language would include and what that next phase of, of communications would come out as.
When did you make contact when you said you reached out to the hospitals? After this was discovered, EPA in May, you also said you reached out to the hospital. When did you reach out to the hospital?
For this specific event, I'll defer if there was earlier communication with the Health Department. But Thursday, September 28th, the same day that we released our public announcement in the morning, myself and Mr. San, we both joined Baltimore City Health Department and discussing that with the city hospitals that evening. But I'll defer to the Health Department if they notified the hospitals before that.
I'm going to ask Kimberly Eschleman to answer. There was an initial outreach to hospitals and then a call was set up, but she can provide more specific information.
Now, when did you actually reach out to, what month did you reach out to the hospital? After it was discovered in May? When did you reach out to the hospitals?
Can you, can you repeat the question?
When, when this was discovered in May and Director Luna said they had to reach out to the EPA, when was the hospitals contacted about this issue back in May?
Before I turn it back over to the Health Department, I just want to make it clear, the, the reservoirs themselves have been under long-term capital of project improvements, right? And so those are both scheduled for completion by November 30th and December 30th. We executed the EPA administrative order, the modified order back in July, which is why then we started doing the monthly testing in July. Like I said, there was no testing that was done prior to July 24th was the date. And so once this first positive came back on September, on, back in two weeks ago, that's when we started this process of notifying on the public and hospitals.
Again, my question is, when was the hospital contacted?
When the first press release came out from DPW, I think that was the morning of Thursday, September 28th. We shared that press release then, within the hour, to our city hospitals to make them aware of the incident. And then that evening, we invited DPW to join the city hospitals for a call, to have discussion and question and answer time so they could get further guidance to their specifics, questions that they had.
Okay, my other question is, you said that when you did the testing, there was no, I guess the, in the city, the second testing, there was no testing. But don't our jurisdiction have other, like Baltimore County, Harford County, they use our water? Am I correct, Director Luna?
That's correct. And so both, yeah, Baltimore County and Howard County are included.
So have we reached out to those agencies, those other counties to find out if they had any parasites? And the reason why I asked, and the other reason I want to ask is, you only talked about Baltimore City. We service water in the surrounding counties, right? Again, have you reached out to them to find out, have they had any parasites? One, why did it take so long for people who have compromising health issues? If you said it was in May, they found out, I guess, in September the 19th like everybody else? And then you tell them boil their water? But if they have compromised in health, why wasn't that sent out also earlier than September the 19th?
So let me make some clarifications to, to this timeline, because I think that'll help us get on the same page. I think what you're referencing in terms of May is just the general notice that you have two uncovered reservoirs that host treated water. And that, those two reservoirs, like we've known for, for the past several years, are open to elements, they're open to the environment, right? And so anything potentially could have gotten into the system during that time. Now, starting in July is when we executed the administrative order with the EPA. That's when we started testing in the lakes, both, both reservoirs. We didn't test before July 24th. So the first testing started on July 24th, and that's the requirement of the EPA administrative order. In terms of additional testing, like I said, we've already initiated monthly, or, we've already initiated weekly testing at both Ashburton and Drewed Lake. We started that last week. My understanding is Howard County did their own additional testing and, and from my knowledge, they have not found any traces of Cryptosporidium within their water system.
So if you was, the question again is, if you were testing, why wasn't community, the community was notified that you was doing some testing from the beginning? My second, my other question is, was the outside jurisdiction notified about this? And did you get any readings back that somebody was sick outside of Baltimore City with this parasite? And why was the reservoir, I guess the, the reservoir was open, is it, is it covered, right? Why was, why was it not covered?
Okay, so a couple of questions there. Let me try to take, and if I forget one, please, please remind me. So as soon as we got the notification of the positive tests, like I said, we start coordinating immediately with EPA and MDE. Those are required through the notifications. We also communicated that same day with Baltimore County and Howard County about what's happening. This is the result we got back, that we're coordinating with both state agencies to make sure that we get the right public notification out, given the timeline that they, that they had issued to us. In terms of the reservoirs themselves, those are the last two remaining open, open air, open environment reservoirs that the city has. Like I said, we're under an administrative order from the EPA to get those completed so that they are no longer open to the elements. That work has been ongoing. We've had some, two different situations at both Ashburton and Drewed Lake. We had to do soil testing at one location, we had to do blasting at Drewed Lake. That also increased the time it took for us to complete those two projects. You also have to understand that there was a pandemic that happened as well at that same time. So work had stopped, there was no work happening at those two, two locations. And then also too, because of the global pandemic, you didn't, you now had supply chain issues in order to get necessary equipment into the, into the sites and procured so that we can finish those two projects. Like I mentioned earlier, we have talked with the contractor, we meet regularly with their team. We are on track to complete those two projects by November 30th and December 30th. Once those two projects are completed, you no longer have open air, once those two projects are completed, you no longer have open air reservoirs in the distribution system. And so that water itself will be protected from all the elements. So you wouldn't have this same instance happen again, once those two projects are completed.
One follow-up question, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Stokes. We are going to move on, I'll come back to you. We're going to move on to another council member at this time, a committee member, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to go back to just simple operations. I saw several articles where they were testing, independent testing labs that could have got us results in 24 hours. Have we considered switching our laboratory partner to do 24-hour testing turnaround?
Thank you, Councilman. So yes, so the contract that we have currently with the independent laboratory, it was set up to provide that monthly testing schedule, right? And so that's, that's the current contract we have. We're currently working with them, like I said, to make sure we're getting the results back as quickly as possible. And we're also looking at other options too, but at least right now, as we experienced last week, we're able to get those results back within two business days.
So again, are we really considering having testing done within 24 hours, especially if we can do an emergency PO, given the current circumstances of the prior issue? I just want to make sure that, that is a legitimate question that you have access to through procurement.
That is a legitimate question, and we have posed that question as well to the state to see if they could provide us with the vendor. To this time, we haven't received that information back. But we, like I said, we are working with the vendor that we currently have procured to making sure we're getting those results back as quickly as possible.
So I just want to make sure I'm hearing this. We're waiting for the state to tell us which vendor to use?
My, our understanding is the same that you've seen in the same news articles, is that there's other laboratories that, that say that they could do this faster. And so we've asked the state to provide that guidance as well to us to see if there's one that they could provide, or at least reference us, refer us to.
So I have a committee request, Madam Chair. Can we provide it, copies of the communications to the state in terms of timeline, in terms of approval for the new vendor that we potentially could do for turnaround times? And then also to estimate the cost of our current vendor to do 24-hour testing?
Did you have any additional questions outside of the committee request?
No, Madam Chair. Given the hour, I will probably save it and have formal questions submitted for the next follow-up hearing.
Okay, we'll make sure that that is soon. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies for being late. I had a, just, I'll just limit it to two short questions. One is, we, the, the concerns I got in my office were, oh my gosh, it's an E coli thing again. What is going on? And the fact that it may not have been to the degree of E coli, but yet it was still a water issue, like I had panicked, panicked constituents. And so I, I just wonder, so there didn't seem to be the same response, right? You just said, well, let's boil the water and then you can also get bottled water. Well, those people who are immunocompromised, which by the way is like 70% of the city, some people can't afford to get an additional bottled water. And so we didn't provide bottled water other than for our senior buildings. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, level of emergency response. Do we have a red, yellow, green, blue? And we should all understand what those levels are and what is needed for each one? Actually, I know the answer to the question, we don't. But I want to figure out why exactly we didn't go ahead and distribute water and, you know, make sure people understood what the resources were, because nobody knew what to do. And we didn't know what to do. We weren't given guidance other than everybody should just boil water and get bottled water. A lot of us used our own money to be able to get our constituents water. And that's just unreasonable. We didn't have, you know, hubs to get wa, so I guess because we just went through the E coli thing, our constituents were extremely worried. And I realized that we didn't have incidents in the hospitals, so you weren't, you didn't think that it was that big of a, but like, it's a big deal. So if you can, let me know why water wasn't distributed other than to our senior buildings and why we weren't having the same emergency response that we got to E coli? And if there's going to be a way that you'll maybe do a leveled response so we know what kind of information and understanding of what happens at what level makes, makes some sense.
In terms of selection, we were asked to identify facilities in, in the impact zone of, you know, where the distribution system was. And senior centers, nursing homes, assisted living facilities with more than 20 individuals, these were selected because it's a congregate setting. And if there were to be an outbreak, that would be, that was the highest priority, at least in the initial push, in terms of who should receive this water. And of course, there are limits as to capacity, and perhaps OEM can speak more to that. But the, the other piece is that for those kinds of facilities, it's a little bit more difficult for them to implement boil water, whereas people in their homes can boil their water. You know, it wasn't just one must only have bottled water. People can, you know, the, the recommendation is to boil water.
So we actually have the ability to do points of distribution. We, we do have a plan in place in terms of what we dealt with, with E coli. But the, the recommendation and guidance that came from the Health Department was to actually focus on the senior centers, the nursing homes, and those congregate living. Also, the, this type of event has only really happened in another part of the country, which is in Portland. And in terms of how Portland has handled this type of event, they actually didn't do water distribution at all. The only thing that Portland has actually done is to issue a press release. So we thought it was beneficial to actually do water distribution in those organized locations. And we, we had just enough water on hand to provide those facilities with enough water to get us to our next, our next testing, which was based on, the lab could be five to seven days. We were able to get those results back sooner, but we tried to provide enough water to those locations to, to get them to that next test result.
And, and then the last point I just want to make is, because I've heard that same comparison too, right? The, the only other thing that the public and the council can, can refer back to is an E coli, E coli event that happened last year. And so very two different things, right? And so an E coli event does impact the overall population in this situation with Cryptosporidium. And the fact that we also had very small trace of, of that material in the water system, right? We're dealing with a very different situation. And the guidance that we received from our state officials is that the general population shouldn't be concerned and can, can consume water as normal. So it's a very different situation that we're dealing with in this, in this case. And like Chief Henderson had mentioned, the only other example that we could pull from, and that was the recommendation that we got through the EPA on that first call that we had with them, is Portland. Portland was the only other jurisdiction in that there, that the EPA knew of that was doing similar testing for Cryptosporidium. And so as we've went through that, throughout that day and even the days to come, and working with MDE and MDH, that's really our best case example that we can refer to and follow their best practices for, for how to handle this type of situation.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter to the public. Yeah, but that doesn't matter to the public, okay? When they see something's going on with our water, it's, everything is going to go happen with our water. I just think that we needed a better way to approach the degree to which this was an emergency, which is why I was suggesting considering at least doing a levels approach, like code red, like everybody needs water, everybody shouldn't drink, you know, whatever, to green, blue, yellow, whatever, because we just, we didn't also have the inform, I mean, we tried to explain it to people, well, you know, it's going to be okay, it's not that bad, I still drink the water. That doesn't matter. So, I just think we need a better way of articulating what the type of emergency is, and what the response is going to be. And Madam Chair, I'll take my other questions offline.
Can I respond to that, though? What I want us to all be mindful of is the role that the regulators play when it comes to these issues. So, when it comes to our communication, that, we cannot communicate with the public, we cannot communicate broadly without it being approved by the state. And in this particular incident, it wasn't just MDE, this is also MDH, right, that we are working collaboratively with to get them to approve whatever messaging can go out to the public. We can't send anything out to the public without that. Also, as far as the implementation of like a coded system on the level of concern, or the level of the emergency, again, that's something that we would have to do in conjunction with our regulators. It's not something that we can, you know, I would feel comfortable with us implementing without doing it in partnership with our regulators. But again, for, and I understand the frustration, and I understand the connections that folks are making to E. coli, which is why I was very public in saying that this is not E. coli. And while this was new for the city of Baltimore, and new for the state of Maryland, and all we had to look at was Portland, Oregon, that we were driven by the data. The date, the levels that were identified were extremely low. We have had multiple negatives, and there was no data that we were seeing an uptick in cases in the hospital. And so, again, that is why the approach was the way that it was. It was very much targeted. You know, we distributed water, what, the team knows the number of pallets, but I think to over 50 locations, if there were individuals who called, then we would have deployed water to those individuals who were in need as well. So, I just wanted to ensure that I reminded us of the partnership that we have to have with our regulators, and why our response was in the way that it was. It was dependent on the data and the guidance that we received from our regulators about how we should be managing communications.
CEO Leach, I, you know, I appreciate your response. The issue that I know, that you know, we are dealing with our constituents who have a heightened level of fear regarding water. So, it's not just about water bottle, or water delivery service. It's really about communication and getting the information out. And even though we are, Portland, Portland may be the only other place, and we have to get things approved by the regulators, there was still a significant amount of time to say, hey, how do we use, and these are questions that can come later, but how did we use the constituent services department within DPW? Did they coordinate with the mayor's office of neighborhoods, knowing that you said younger children are at a greater risk? How did we talk to our school coordinators? How did we relay this to our seniors who are not within our senior buildings, within our senior centers, who are not in a total of 20-plus folks?
Yep.
We still got to get this information out. And I don't like to have a constituent sitting for a certain amount of time and just not getting answers, that are not answered within the FAQ, just because that's just that heightened level of fear.
I totally agree. And we, of course, received the similar feedback from constituents, who, again, do have this heightened level of concern. And I always want to be thoughtful in my approach, and not to minimize, not to minimize things. But again, the levels detected were very low. This was out of an abundance of caution, given the fact that we had E. coli, and these reservoirs were uncovered, which we are working diligently and hope to have those reservoirs covered by the end of the year. As far as the communication with the school system, the school system moved immediately to deploy bottled water across, and distribution to all of their students. So, there was that communication. There were communication with senior buildings, senior centers, and the like.
We, I got to cut in here, because this is what I'm saying. It's not about bottled water. It's about messaging. If we know that there are low levels, and there are heightened levels of concern, it's not about the water, it's educating folks to let them know, this is what's happening, so they can trust our system.
Of course.
But that, I want to know, what did the school system do to let parents know about that their young children, even though this is a very low risk, but this can happen, not just about supplying water bottles, but this was largely a communication issue?
Yes.
For my office?
Yes, no, absolutely. I appreciate that, and appreciate the feedback here. Again, I think that, given that there were no established protocols from the state, we were working with the state to develop what the communication should be, because the state has to approve. I can't go out and send out communications about testing and results, or even the public health risk, because again, MDH advised us on what the public health risks were. Of course, we shared with them what we believed them to be, but they gave us a specific language and asserted that we included particular language around this issue. So, again, I receive that. And I think for what we are doing with the website, and we can do more public communication as well, now that we are doing testing of cryptosporidium and gerardia, is to make sure that in addition to the FAQ, in addition to the testing results that we are posting weekly, that we can pull public health information about the impact of cryptosporidias on public health, and that we are doing more education, so that the community is aware. And we can broaden it, so that it's not just about cryptosporidium, or gerardia, or E. coli, but just any potential risk with our water system. So, there's more work that we can do around that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're going to recess this hearing. Before we recess, I am going to get to Councilman Stokes for a very quick follow-up, because we have another committee coming in here in less than four minutes.
My question is for Director Luna. When September 19th, the press release came out about a parasite, you said y'all didn't, the hospital didn't know until the 28th? Am I correct? From the Health Department?
The press release was issued September 28th at 8:51 a.m., and then, like the Health Department staff say, stated, that information was shared with them thereafter.
What is September 19th, then? What is that?
That's when the actual sample was collected. So, they pulled the sample on September 19th, and we received those results on the 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you all for joining. As I've stated multiple times, we are going to have another hearing very soon, where we, where our residents will be able to wait in virtually, as well as in person. I just want to make sure that you have enough time to do so. At this time, the hearing is recessed. Thanks, everyone, for joining.